All right, where we are September 11 today?
Live right now.
Thank you. I'm zooming through these minutes so we can approve them. I... We only have one new one, everything else has already been read in, so...
All right, we're ready to go, everyone. Give us some quiet, please. Thank you for all coming for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight's agenda for Wednesday, September 11, 2024. It is 6:30 PM and we are in room 520 of the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson, our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi. My far left, an associate member, Mr. Chris Conti, Christopher Conti, Mr. Richard Sample, and myself, the chair, Nazir Al Qulasi. Throughout the night, Mr. Conti will be sitting for Mrs. Debeney's seat because she's not coming tonight. If anybody, any applicant or attorneys have an objection for that, can let us know. We're gonna do some quick business before we start. The minutes for 8:28, 2024.
The minutes for 8:28, 2024 look satisfactory to me. Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Akabachi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sample. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. Carrie's. All right, we're gonna go to 33-24 Warren Q O Z B L L C, 59 Main Street. Minor modification for divention variance. Name and address, sir?
I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering here on behalf of the applicant.
Before we start, I wanna take a quick second. Our clerk gonna swear in, everybody's gonna testify, professional testifying only.
I talked with the town council, he said he wants us to do it.
Case by case?
Case by case.
All right, very well. Okay, very well. Not this one, no.
Don't need it on this one. And before we start this one, I just wanna make mention to the room so that we don't forget. I was alive 24 years ago on September 11th. And I just, I just can't help but on September 11th recognize... And that's enough about that. Go ahead.
All right, why don't we have a moment of silence for that matter, please? All right, very well. Let's proceed. Okay, Mr. Madden, name and address.
I'm Bill Madden, GAF Engineering, 266 Main Street. We're here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, very well. Let's hear it.
We're just looking for modification to the, to the, to the variance that was granted for property line setbacks for the dumpster enclosure for the building. I have a, I have a semblance of some paper to pass out for y'all. That'll basically address everything that...
Thank you.
...we're talking about tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, you might recall going back into July of this past year, this summer, we came before you for a side yard setback variance for the dumpster enclosure building that was proposed to be constructed in the side yard setback on the south side of the property. First, the first piece of paper that I handed out that's, is where the building currently exists right now as it exists. The second sheet, figure two, this, that's the sheet that you, that you based your decision on, and I made a copy of the decision and placed it with the, with the information. So, the dumpster enclosure originally was, was gonna be nine feet wide by 31 feet long, by 30 feet long, and it was gonna be set three feet from the side yard, from the side yard. You granted that variance. There was not a front yard setback variance required because it's the average of the five structures on each side, so the closest buildings are British Landing, the only buildings are British Landing, they're 11 feet from the street line, and this building is setback 23 and a half feet. So there is not a, there is not a setback variance required for the front yard. And I think your original decision only granted us the side yard setback going to three feet from, from the 10. You might recall, we had some discussions about the dumpster enclosure building. It was constructed on the pad that was put in place prior to you acting on the, on the variance request. It was 5.3 feet from the property line, although we were authorized to go within three feet of the property, or two, three feet of the property line. It was constructed 5.3. That's what we're here for tonight is to have that three feet changed to 5.3 feet on the setback. So additionally, the building was three feet wider than originally proposed, and it's actually 31 feet 1 inch by 12 feet 1 inch, and it's on, on the existing concrete, concrete slab that's out there. The slab is, I don't know, 13 by, 13 by 16, sorry, 13 by 35, I believe. But in any event, it's on that existing concrete slab. The, the building itself was originally proposed, I think we sent you a sketch of the original building, had two garage doors, swing open garage doors. The applicant constructed a building with three garage doors. We had to go to historic as well with this because it was a modification to the approval that they had granted us. On Monday night, they had a meeting, I think it was a week ago Monday, they had a meeting and they granted an approval of the modifications to the plan. There's a copy of an email, they did not send me a letter, but there's a copy of an email that I submitted along with, along with the information that I handed out that indicated that they approved the building with the overhead garage, with the doors as we proposed. The sketch, which is the fourth page of the information, indicates what that building, what that building looks like, front elevation and the end elevations as well. So the backup is here for your variance information. We, we provided you with the as-built of where that building is. The, is on that existing concrete slab. Big issue, I guess some total of it all is we're looking to be 5.3 feet off the property line, not the three that was granted.
All right, very well. I recall the variance. The hardship was proven, and the board voted 5-0-0. No one, Danny, do things twice or three times. I would think this is an honest mistake. I personally am okay with it. I pass up by the board, see what they think, so we just gotta decide if it's minor or major. If it's major, we'll have to come back for public hearing. If you think it's minor, we could grant it the way it is, we could go forward.
I feel as though it's minor.
Minor. Jimmy?
I think it's minor, and I even question whether we need to modify the variance from three to five feet. It's five feet away instead of three feet. He's, he's further away, he's not closer, we don't have to further vary him. That's the way I see it, but...
Well, it's a big...
We can restrict him from, from putting a two-foot addition on the back of the building, I guess, by changing it to five, but...
Well, it's, it's, it's not what we granted, so...
You wanna, you wanna... Okay.
Stick with it. It's a different size as well. Chris?
Minor.
Minor. Richard?
Minor.
I think it's minor as well.
Could I comment?
Yeah.
On Jim's comment? We just want clarity on the plans because the plan that was originally submitted indicated that 3.3, to avoid any confusion with inspections, say, by the building department or any other interested parties on the site, we thought that it was prudent to come before you for that.
I have no objection, I just...
I agree.
You know. So are we, are we still in open session? Do we need to close public comment? Do we need to hear public comment before we close public comment?
If anybody here from the public on this matter, it wasn't advertised, but is anyone here for this matter, in favor or against? I don't see anyone.
Okay, good. And so we don't really need to close it to the public because it's a minor modification to an already, already made decision, right?
Right. Why don't we close it to be, just to be safe?
Just to be, okay, so we'll vote to, I'm voting to end all discussion on this matter.
Okay.
Other than amongst the board.
All right, do we have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye.
Okay.
With that done, I make a motion that we approve the minor modifications as requested and accept as already built the footprint that's there and shown on this plan. Figure one, I don't know, is there a date on this?
September 11th, yes.
September 11, 2024.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Carrie's, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Geez, we should've kept you guys till last, we could've kept you here all night.
Thank you for not doing that, 'cause I'm very tired.
Have a good night.
All right, we go into continued public hearing, 36-24 Indian Neck Property LLC, variance lap, special permit, site land review, 50 Indian Neck Road. All right, in this matter, I'm gonna have the clerks swear in, everybody's gonna testify in this matter, except the attorneys. Please stand up and raise your right hand. Jimmy, please.
So each and all of you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Okay, please have a seat. All right, Mr. Bobrovsky, counselor?
Good evening, Mr.
Public, you're welcome. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mark Bobrovsky for the record. My address is Damon Mill Square in Concord, Massachusetts. I represent the petitioner in front of you tonight for the variance. I think there's some progress that's been made, we wanna give you an update, and...
Okay.
I think we're prepared to accept a continuance to come back in another two weeks when hopefully we can resolve the rest of the issues. I, I think peer review with Mr. Cordero has gone pretty much to the end of the road, but we're, we're done pretty much with his comments. We can, we can verify that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's done. There've been a couple of meetings with town officials. Your town administrator, Mr. Sullivan, had a list of things that he brought to our attention that he wanted to see accomplished as part of this petition. And Mr. Kukuru, who's sitting to my far left, will address some of those issues now and tell you what his reaction was to that list of items.
All right, very well.
So...
Just name and address for the record.
Richard Kukuru, 200 Terrahoon Drive, Falmouth, Massachusetts.
Okay.
So these are some of the things that were addressed to us that we believe that we can address and resolve. So Gosnold is prepared to do specialized training and develop a strong collaboration with police, fire, EMS, and hospital. We currently have quarterly meetings with the Falmouth Police, Fire, EMS, and Hospital, and those meetings have been very successful and have resolved a number of issues, to the extent that the meeting that we were, had scheduled for yesterday was canceled because there were no agenda items, because over the last quarter, things had gone so smoothly with, with the support services. But we're prepared to develop a liaison with, with all of those services from Gosnold so that we can work collaboratively with those, with those services. I have contacted Chief Correa. We've been trying to arrange a time with the fire chiefs, and I think one of them is on vacation, and I think the plan is to have that meeting next week. We try to develop a relationship with Toby Hospital in terms of providing services to them, and Toby said that they didn't, did not need our services, that they had adequate services at the hospital already. But we will continue to try to bridge that relationship. I did speak with Brad Allen today, had a very good conversation with him regarding the EMS transport. He said that he felt like the volume of the ES transport was not a big lift for them, felt like they could handle that transport. I suggested that we could contract with a private ambulance company, which I have already done, contacted out to Coastal Ambulance. He asked me not to do that, he said bringing a private ambulance into the town only creates problems, and he would prefer to, we use EMS directly for all of these calls, and that the number of 400 calls in a given year were not, were not a considerable problem for him, and that he could handle those calls, considering the fact that the facility is only a mile from Toby Hospital. We, we are committed to...
Can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
Through you.
Got that.
I, I just wanna state it into the record. When you call EMS and the ambulance comes, is that a free service to you, provided by the town, or is that something that the insurance pays for on every ride?
Insurance pays for every ride.
I just wanted that in the record, thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
We work, we will work with town leaders regarding the opiate settlement funds and how to best disturb, distribute those to serve the residents of Wareham. We would also collaborate with town around possible grants to help around materials and equipment and services. We've done this with a number of different hospitals and helped create or secure grants for them, because we have grant writers who work for us, and we're happy to do that for Wareham as well. We are opening to considering a seat on our board of directors for a resident in Wareham. That person would need to meet with my governance committee. I spoke to my board chair, he is open to that, having those conversations, and we do think that that would be a good benefit for both Gosnold and the town. And we are agreeing to hire security personnel, who would be responsible for patrolling the grounds, monitoring the cameras. We would identify hours that were necessary for, for these to happen, and then he would be responsible to make sure that everybody was safe. I've asked Ally Anderson, who is my chief clinical officer, to address some of the clinical stuff that had came up, and she can talk with some of the stuff about you, with you.
So, Ally Anderson, chief clinical officer, Gosnold, 200 Terrahoon. So some of the things that came up was the school counseling service. Prior to COVID, Gosnold was actually in all of the schools in Wareham, providing onsite clinical services to students in need. We are more than happy to do that again for Wareham and its residents. We would come out, we would meet with the superintendent and the principals, as well as the guidance counselors at the school, to figure out what was the level of need for each school, assess, and then embed student counselors within each school for the students. It's actually a wonderful program. We do provide it in 30-plus schools on and off Cape, so we'd love to be back in Wareham once again, helping the students here.
So we, we provide this at a fee in other schools, we would not provide that at a fee here in Wareham, that would be a free service for, for the Wareham schools.
All right.
Chair?
Yes.
Through the chair, may I ask, where do we stand with the 53G call?
They did open one. They have a 53G.
Okay.
Right?
No, not yet.
No? I saw the last time they said they opened one.
We came on the conversation last week.
Good question.
And I reached out to...
Good question, good.
We've, I forwarded it to my client, he'll take care of it shortly. Thank you.
Okay, very well. All right, you know, I'm gonna ask, we're gonna go back to the use variance. All right? You know, it's not a pleasant discussion. Before I start, like I said before, Wareham is a diverse town. Wareham always contribute when it comes to public services. Wareham does not discriminate against anyone, nor the board, I can guarantee you that. We are one of the biggest contributor of housing for 4B. I mean, the last three, three years, we probably granted almost 300 units. As a matter of fact, 90 of them, it was initiated by the town, 90 units. We have services, senior fuel assistant, we have Wareham Housing Authority. And I, and like I said before, this facility you propose, and it's a great facility, and like I said, this could be my daughter, my son, my brother, his sister, his father, his mother, so we do understand the need of it, no doubt about this, and Wareham always reach out to help in this matter. If you take all the surrounding towns, Wareham is the most who contribute to these matters. Housing, like I said, we have also, not to mention, 1,200 mobile homes, that doesn't count to our affordable housing stock, although we accommodate them. EMS, never complain. The police, I know the chief last time, mentioned a lot of phone calls, there'll be a lot of stress on the police, which I disagree, this is their job, like I said, this is a responsibility we have to take. However, with all these responsibilities, it doesn't mean we have to break our bylaws. So there's nothing against the people in there. Our, our, my concern, I don't know about the board, breaking the laws or breaking, granting a variance, well, it's not warranted. I did see the cases Mr. Bobrovsky sent me. We discussed Oxford House versus Town of Babylon, and I believe I proved to Mr. Bobrovsky and to you last time, that's a boarding house or halfway house. So this Oxford House does not apply here. It's a boarding house, it's a case about a boarding house. And then we go about the Granada House versus City Boston that was forwarded to me from last hearing. It's a similar matter, it's a, it's a boarding house or what you call halfway house. So it has nothing to do with the detox center. Now we come to the real test. The Barrow, Ernston, 901 Ernston Road LLC versus the Barrow of Savrell zoning board. Now in this case, Mr. Bobrovsky, you cited this case, right, for me?
Yes.
Now, how, how do you compare this case to our case? What brings this case to this, how, how does it seem?
Well, I think both Granada House and 901 Ernston, Mr. Chairman, are situations in which the use was not an allowed use in the district or the zoning for the community. This is, this is true with regard to your bylaw as well. In Granada House, they wanted to do a, what do they call it, a group residence, general versus group residence limited. Limited was allowed, general was not. The difference between them was relatively minor, and they asked for a use variance in order to do the one that best described their facility, which was general. In the Ernston case, the use was not an allowed use in the district that they were in, the prime zone, which was exclusively commercial, not residential at all. So they asked for a use variance in order to do what was essentially, they called, a long-term care facility, nursing facility, a rehabilitation facility, and that did have a detox component in it. It was Resource, I'm sorry, Recovery Centers of America, which is a major franchised operation in this kind of field. So the board in both cases denied the variances because they said the use is not allowed, and in both cases, the applicant then turned and asked for protection under the federal disability laws. And the, both cases go through every disability law, the Federal Fair Housing Act amendments of 1988, the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1992, the Rehabilitation Act, which is an older law that really applies mostly to federal funding, mass general laws, chapter 48, section 3 in Granada House. There is an anti-discrimination provision in that statute, also called the Dover Amendment, it's kind of far down the paragraphs, but it's in there, and it requires municipalities to make the same choices with regard to disabled persons' facility service as the federal laws do. And so under those things, and you can go through each of these statutes in both of these cases, although Ernston is a New Jersey federal district court case, so we're not dealing with the Dover Amendment, but you can go through all of these cases and see how the court deals with these kinds of questions. First, foremost, the federal disability laws may require in some circumstances municipalities to waive their zoning, that's stated right in the cases, and that means you make an exception for this because it's federally protected, and that's essentially why we're coming down this road. As a variance, you waive the criteria that are your customary criteria under chapter 48, section 10, particularly where we're asking you for the variance as a reasonable accommodation, and that's what we're doing. We're asking you to give us an accommodation by giving us the variance that you may think we're not statutorily entitled to, but we are entitled to it under the federal disability laws. And the, the cases, the cases are very clear that that's the path for permitting these things. I've litigated a couple of these things in federal district court in Boston. In one case, I represented the municipality of Wenham. In the second case, I represented the private provider in Wilmington. Both cases came out the same. The invocation of the federal disability laws takes it out of the arena of mass general laws variance analysis and puts it into a higher atmosphere, if you will.
All right. Before I discuss this, I wanna just bring to your attention, we just approved by right on a commercial strip zone, 33 beds, detox, outpatient and inpatient. So that's, and we have one outpatient, so again, proof that Wareham reaching out to everybody. Now, would you just discuss with these cases, I do agree with you with the Granada House and Oxford House, but these are boarding houses. On, on the Savrell, it is a nursing home, and I see that the, the court granted you a variance to turn the nursing home to a detox on the Savrell.
In the Ernston case?
Yes.
Yes. It's, it's just, it's just like Gosnold, it's the same site, type of provider.
Right. However, however, in the, in the Barrow and the Savrell, Ernston case, 901 Ernston exhausted every option in town or the whole Barrow area, and the town and the Barrow area failed to provide, to provide such service. And I'm gonna read this, and you, from your case, here it is undisputed and was discussed many times during the course of the hearing, that because right now, the use is not permitted anywhere, anywhere in the Barrow, the use in, in the Barrow area, a variance must be granted to accommodate RCA facility in the Savrell. That's why the court, I, I read the whole thing, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, because 901 Ernston exhausted, like I said, every option in town, and the town did not allow it anywhere, anywhere in the Barrow area. We do allow it, we accommodate it, we service it, and we, we more than happy to help our brothers and sisters in this matter. So this, I don't think this case applied to us.
There's nothing, that's like saying that under chapter 40B, if you've got one, you don't have to do another one. The, the answer is that we are asking for a variance on this specific piece of property in a district where it's not otherwise allowed. I understand that you've dealt with another one and it wasn't allowed use, and that it's just recently been permitted, although I don't know the details, Mr. Chairman. But with regard to our property, we're making a specific application. It's not tit-for-tat or one or the other, it's both. Their permitting path was relatively simple, it seems, because it was allowed in the district. Ours is more complicated because it's not. The one doesn't forgive our applicant, make our application moot. We still have an application in front of you, and the law is still the law. If you need to waive local provisions of the zoning in order to make this possible, that's what the federal disability laws require. And you don't get forgiveness because you're just a permitted one over here, you have to deal with each application as it's presented to you.
I totally understand, I didn't ask for forgiveness. I, I'm not asking for forgiveness, I'm, I'm showing you that the town of Wareham reach out. They, they not, for any shape or reason, discriminate against brothers and sister like that, or parents or family members. But you keep discussing, you said a 40B, a 40B called a special permit, it's not called a variance.
It's the cop permit.
A comprehensive permit, it's not a variance. If this was allowed, you would be here by a comprehensive permit, if it's allowed by chapter 48, you wouldn't be here for a variance. So the laws... So the laws is very clear, and the case, and I don't want to drift away from this matter. Do you agree that this use was not allowed in the whole Barrow area? That's why the court granted that variance?
That's the reason with regard to that specific application, yes.
Okay. So we agree?
It wasn't allowed solely because it wasn't allowed anywhere else in the town. It was allowed because they asserted their rights under the federal disability laws.
I disagree. I read the case. They exhausted every option and the judge, see, I'm sure you read the case, and the judge see, because they did not allow it in the town, anywhere in the whole Barrow, that's why he granted it to them.
I think you're hanging your hat on a very narrow point. It's not the point that determined the outcome of the case. The case was determined on the basis of federal disability law. And I, you know, I feel very uncomfortable having a legal argument with you, Mr. Chairman, in the context of this public hearing, when counsel's sitting directly behind me.
Well, if you don't think I'm competent enough, argue with my counsel. Put my counsel up here, ask him to argue with it.
I don't, it's not my role to do that.
I mean, I know I'm not a lawyer, and, but I do understand laws. It's a little insult for me that you don't want to argue with me.
I am.
Because I put you on the point. Answer the point. You're not getting to the point.
I am getting to the point.
Do you don't think this case was granted because the town did not allow it anywhere in the whole Barrow area?
No, I think it ultimately boils down to the fact that it was not allowed in the prime district. It didn't have anything to do with the whole town. It was a worthwhile point for the court to note that it wasn't allowed anywhere else in town, but it's not the determinant in the case. The case is determined on the fact that they asked for a variance because it wasn't allowed use where they wanted to do it. You have to waive local bylaws when that's the case, and that's why they gave the preliminary injunction to 901 Ernston in that case. And if you-
I understand your argument. I understand what you're arguing.
You don't agree with it.
Because I don't think the judge in this matter, he agree with you because what I said, because the reason he didn't allow it. Apparently, we're not seeing eye to eye. We pass to the board, let's see what they say.
That's the beauty of the law, Mr.
Exactly. All right, we start by Troy. What do you think?
I really don't have any opinion right now.
Jimmy?
I have a couple of questions. In your conversation, optional sites was brought up in the conversation. Has your, who's your client? The Gosnell or the landlord or both?
Both.
Okay. So have your clients exhausted optional sites? Have you looked all over Wareham to see if there's another appropriate location? And have you found anything that would fit as a matter of right?
I'll let Mr. Hines speak for himself and Mr. Kukru.
So we have, we have not looked at other sites within Wareham. We have looked at other sites, multiple sites on Cape Cod, and not found sufficient sites.
In the-
In the region, correct.
The county, but yeah. Specifically Wareham.
Have not found something this size that accommodated this many beds.
And refresh me, how many beds are we looking at here?
98.
98. Okay. So that was one question. The other question, as I'm listening, the word disability has come up multiple times. Is it, and I guess I'm asking, I'm not, it's not a comment, it's a question. Is an addiction to either alcohol or a chemical substance other than alcohol a disability?
Yes.
Under the law?
It is under, under both the Fair Housing Act amendments of 1988, the Rehabilitation Act, and the ADA.
I'm just trying to understand, you know, I mean, that's what you're hanging your hat on.
Well, that's, that's why I cited Oxford.
I understand.
We go back, it was 15, 20 years ago, when the first cases decided that these were disabilities protected by the law. That's the purpose of the citation that I made, not because it was a boarding house. RCA is not a boarding house. It's about, most of their facilities are about the size of what we're proposing to do, if not larger. And they're totally run as a commercial enterprise, although they do constitute residence, residences for the people that are, that have a bed.
So the disability word had me, you know, I was gray, so I wanted to ask that.
It's a surprise to people, I think, that-
Pardon me?
I think it's a surprise to people that are not familiar with this, that both drug and alcohol addiction, recovering addicts are protected under the disability laws. But that's been true for 20, the ADA was 1992. So that's been true for a long time.
In the past, just as a general discussion, I've known people that I personally believed that they were substance abusers, and they bragged to me that they hit the lottery when they got declared disabled and they got on social security, "I'm set for life. So I did drugs, I got stupid, now I'm set for life." It's a matter of, it's just a matter of society, that's where we are, you know, whether we agree or disagree with it. So it is a disability. That was my question.
No question about it.
Okay. And then as far as optional sites, would Gosnell look at an optional site if somebody in the town suggested one?
I think your question is one I've heard in 38 years of practice, about 150 times for 40B, and it's the same answer. This is the site we control. It's our application. I can't count the number of times people have said, "I'm not against 40B, I'm just against it here." Why can't you put it over there?
Because, I get it, you know, it's when they're putting in a solar farm and they're cutting down trees, why aren't you putting it in a parking lot? Because we don't own that parking lot, we own this forest.
That's why the state and the federal government has adopted various protective measures for what are otherwise known as NIMBYs. Solar, 40B.
You may not have figured out which side of this argument I'm on. I know you know that the chair is very passionate on his side of the argument, and I've remained neutral. But I got my questions answered.
Happy to answer them.
All right.
Thank you.
You mentioned again Oxford House. Oxford House is not a detox. They recovered addict and they live. They not, they not, it's not a detox center.
You're reading this much too narrowly. Will you agree with me that RCA is a detox facility in the same manner that what Gosnell is proposing to do is a detox facility?
The one, Ernston Road, it's a detox.
Okay, well, this is all about the federal disability law. It's not a one-off. This is a case that's basically the lead nationally for RCA in order to get its permits to do.
All right. Why you keep bringing Oxford? I just don't want to confuse the public. Oxford House and Granada House are recovered addict. They live there, they're recovered addict, they're not in the detox. They already been there, they go live there. And I totally agree, you can discriminate against them. So is the Ernston. You can discriminate, I know it's a disability. However, in this matter, I'm not going to say it again, but I prove to you because there's no other place in the Barrow area, that's why the court granted this case.
I see the language that you're pointing to.
Yeah.
I don't think that's the reason that they won. I think the reason that they won was because it wasn't allowed in the prime district.
No, yeah.
Their property was.
Well, shame on them, they should have dedicated area that's allowed. And this is what the court, this is where the court based their action on. This is the decision of the court, the last two paragraphs. This is the main thing.
No, I don't think it's the main thing. They're quoting other cases there, for one thing. On the top of page eight, in the column switch from left to right, the, in concluding that where a convalescent home was not permitted as a right anywhere, a special exception is necessary, that's a quote from Community Services, Inc., not from the judge's finding in the Ernston Road decision. The key is the paragraph before that. And that is the language that basically says, "As applied to zoning cases," again quoting another case, "municipalities must change, waive, or make exceptions in their zoning rules to make these kinds of facilities possible, not just where there's no opportunity anywhere in town, but where the application is made and the opportunity is short."
Counsel, you just answered yourself. Communities must make these areas available, areas available, and that's why they fail on the Barrow.
No, I don't-
You just answered yourself.
I don't agree with you.
Very well.
The sentence I just read is not limited to communities that don't have any opportunity at all. They're limited, it's not limited in that way.
All right, very well, we continue. Richard?
Nothing at this time. I don't have any comments right now.
All right. Do you mind if we go to public, just public? Anyone on this, for this matter, in favor of this matter? Okay, not anyone against in this matter, against this project?
I might just say, Mr. Chairman, that there been a meeting between Mr. Fredrickson, who's been engaged by Mr. Hines as a security advisor, and counsel for the neighbors. And we hope that sometime in the next week, 10 days, at the outside, there will be a gathering with the chiefs and the neighbors and our side to try to resolve some of these security-related issues. I don't think we're far apart, we just haven't had the opportunity to get people together. As it was mentioned, one of your chiefs is on vacation last week.
Well, I'm sure you guys doing a great job in every aspect. The site plan is good, everything you guys doing is good. We just, I'm just hang up on the virus. That's all what it is.
Through you, I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's really not a question, it's just a comment, or it's a, you mentioned the neighborhood, you mentioned that there's ongoing dialogue. In our previous meeting, there was discussion about possibly removing the existing sidewalk from the facility side of the street. And that's stuck in my head, and it's still stuck in my head. So, and the reason they wanted to move the sidewalk from the facility side of the street was counterintuitive to me, I believe, because if you don't, you, now, if you're afraid people from the facility are going to be walking down the street, why are you going to force them to walk on your side of the street? There's already a sidewalk on the facility side of the street. Why would you remove it? I don't quite get that line of thinking, and I'm saying it out loud because I know, I see in the room counsel that represents the neighbors. So I think that, I personally think that point needs further discussion.
We have not discussed it since three weeks ago.
But it's just, it's just what's, you know, my, people have always said I got a brain made of Jell-O, and that's what my Jell-O is producing, you know?
I think we're in a position where we can honestly say we're happy to do whatever it is.
Yeah, well, I just think it deserves conversation between the neighbors and your people and your peer reviewer. That's my comment. I heard that they need to have further discussion with the neighbors, so with that in mind, I'm certainly not ready to make any motions for-
And I was hoping, I was hoping today, I called the selectmen, hopefully reached out to talk to Mr. Bowen. It didn't happen, nobody get back to me. I think it's best to continue. I'll consult with counsel, see what he thinks, see if I have a leg to stand on. If he says no, I guess I have no choice. I might abstain, but you still have four board members to convince, but, do you want to add anything before we continue?
No, I think we can continue to the next date, which would be the 25th, if you're reading.
Richard, is, Chris, the deadline is good?
To September 28th, is that the suggestion?
10/22.
10/22.
Okay.
What is the date?
25.
10/22. 10, 9 or 10?
No, no.
10/22?
No, no, 9/25. You want to come back on 9/2?
The deadline is 10/25.
That's our 100 days?
100 days, 100 days is 20, what? The Venice, 100 days from the application, from the application.
You come back 9/25, okay?
When was the application filed?
I'm a slow reader, but I'll get there.
It's not here.
It's not, listen, it's not in the back here?
Right here, right here, but it's not. Just see when the application was stamped.
Sure.
Yes, counsel?
No problem.
Yeah, you want to come forward?
If you can hear me right here.
Unfortunately, it has to be on the mic. Please, have a seat.
I'm going to, I want to sit on the town bench.
It's great to have you.
Well, welcome home.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're back.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that as we were sitting there, I had a text from Madam-
For the record, just the name.
Oh, yeah, of course, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
She needs to-
Richard Bowen, Town Council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we were sitting there just moments ago, I had a text from Madam Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, who said she'd be very happy for you to come and talk to me anytime you'd like. So anytime you'd like, I'd be happy to-
All right, thank you.
Discuss it.
I did reach out a couple of times, she didn't answer today, but it's okay.
I know she was-
I know she's busy.
Yeah, she was, she was running around quite a bit, had a few interesting issues today. But if I can be of any assistance to you or any member of the board, I'm here to help you.
Okay, very well. I'm sure I'll reach out, if not this week, next week, for sure, and just put it to bed.
Absolutely.
All right, but did you see when it was stamped?
She's going to have to look it up online, it's not even in the box.
Anyway, what's that?
Leave it said 10/22 on the-
Are you willing to grant an extension on the time for us to make a decision?
On the deadline decision?
Appropriate with the date.
If the next meeting is 9/25 and we close, will you need an extension?
You won't.
Okay, well, let's see what happens next meeting.
If, I just wanted to get a feeling, if you need, you're willing to give us 30 days from the day we finally make a vote?
I'm not going to do anything, if you're going to close, if you're going to close the hearing, I'll give you whatever extension you need. Let's just see when you close the hearing.
That's all I wanted to hear.
I have a meeting tomorrow night in Merrimack that I've continued on behalf of the applicant for 10 consecutive months because we were waiting for DEP to issue a superseding order. So I'm all about extensions.
And we're looking at 9/25, 24 for you to come back on discontinuance. As far as time for us to make a decision, we're still in the, we're still in the window.
And if you need additional time, because we're getting close to the end of the window, just-
Then it's that, we can do it next time. I just wanted to put everybody at ease that you're not going to say, "Aha, we're going to get a prescriptive approval," or-
Not my style.
All right, June 20, 2000, oh, that's, yeah.
What'd you say, it was start on June, in June?
No, no, no.
Doesn't matter, we've still got a 30-day window from next meeting, so we can, we can do it next time.
I don't think, just let me look quick, please. I can't see the application. All right, it's June 20, 2024.
June, June, August, September, October, November.
No, no, 100 days. It's close.
100 days, 30, 16, 9.
It's close, you're going to need a letter.
Would you like me to give you the extension now?
It could be verbally and you could email it. Why don't we get an extension until October 24?
That's fine.
That's fine?
Got some, did you hear that?
Extension 10/24, 2024.
Thank you, Mr.
You're welcome. All right, that being said, can we get a motion to continue till the 21st?
So moved.
I have a motion by Jim to continue this matter. 36-24 Indian Neck Property LLC by Jim, until September 25, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Larson, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard? Myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see you on the 21st. Thank you.
On deck is 5/24 Walid Al-Daya.
All right, 5/24 Walid Al-Daya, Special Permitment Site Plan Review, 2544 and 2546 Cranberry Highway.
And before we start with these review, before I let you guys loose, I believe that information was supplied to the planning office as late as today. And just so, just in all fairness, the board has a policy that they won't take a final vote on anything unless information has been matured at least two weeks or cured for at least, so that the building department has a chance to review it, et cetera, and et cetera. So there'll be no, there'll be no final decision tonight on this matter for that reason alone.
All right, public hearings still open, name and address for the record.
Attorney Julian Morton, representing the applicant.
Okay.
Brendan Coleman, the applicant.
Bill Madden, GF Engineering, representing the applicant.
Is, on the neighbors, is there a counsel presenting the neighbors? Is there a counsel? I had, I saw a letter from Bobrowski's office representing you. Are they here?
Wrong case. That's...
Oh, sorry.
The last one, she's representing the neighbors.
No, that's 386 Main Street, never mind.
I don't think there's any opposition.
All right, where we at?
Yeah, so just, again, I know we're not going to give a vote, just to update you where we are. Mr. Madden has the plans. I don't know if it's fruitful to like go through those or wait for Mr. Cudaro's review. I know you guys have a long night. So, but maybe Brendan can speak to what he's done on the site. I think that's really helpful, what's actually physically been done, so you guys can see. And then, you know, we'd be continuing for two weeks, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've, the floor drain, the tanks, the oil separator has all been installed, inspected, passed inspection, no problem. Plumbing and electrical. And we've put the new curbing in, we've done...
What new curbing?
Well, one of the things in the review was that a couple of the ties, the railroad ties that were there, you know, that he, previous owner, used as like a curbing on the sidewalk going into the building, were rotted out.
That's irrelevant tonight unless, until we see the site plan.
And I'm just telling you what we did, that's all.
We asked you to put the floor drain, just to help you out, to keep your license, your sticker.
And that's...
Anything on the site plan, we haven't made decision.
I, either way, it had to be done.
All right.
Because they weren't, they were falling apart. You know, we made it look nicer, we did some landscaping, and obviously we were doing that, they had cut in the grass, all that type of stuff. And the lighting is all working as well. So it comes on at night, like it should, on a timer.
It's still irrelevant, it's got to be with our site plan. Are you ready for site plan next hearing?
Yes.
All right, so bottom line, you needed an extension.
Yes.
Very well. Anyone in this room in favor of this matter? Anyone against? So you're not ready, you didn't file it for the, did you file it with the town?
Yes.
You did, and we need the two weeks, and you're not ready.
Do you want to discuss it at all, or you don't even want to?
No, there's no sense, it's such a short, short, short time.
Let the building department have a chance to say it before we...
Built, building already determined, right?
Yes.
He's good. We just let Mr. Cudaro, Alan Major, review it. We need time to review it.
Okay.
But before we go forward, I'll ask, do you have any question on this matter? Jimmy?
No questions, I just want to remind the board and anybody listening, by my memory, in this case, this owner bought the property. I guess we could say they didn't do their due diligence nonetheless.
It was more misrepresentation, but...
Let the gentleman finish.
But I just wanted everybody to be aware that this applicant bought a property that he thought was permitted for the use he's using and found out it wasn't. And he's in front of us because he wants to be permitted. Just for everybody to remember, to remember it, that's all.
All right, very well. Richard, any questions? Chris? All right, very well, that being said, can we get a motion to continue? 25th is good?
Yes.
9/25, 24?
Yes.
How are we on the time for decision?
I think she granted us, no, she granted us a long time.
It was till the end of like October or something.
You've already, you've already put it out.
If not, I thought I did that last time.
It was at least the minimum at the end of September, I believe.
Okay.
At the earliest.
Well, if you want, I can do the end of October, if you want that, just to bring it on record.
10/24, to be sure.
10/24, okay.
All right, you send an email for Sonia?
Of course.
So I make a motion to continue?
10/25, because we meet on 10/24, to 10/25, okay? Extension till 10/25.
Yes.
On the last one, we did 24.
No, I did, I added 10.
Okay, I wrote 24. We meet on the 24th.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so my motion is to...
Meet on the 23rd, Jimmy.
23rd.
I did 24.
So it is the 24th.
No, they gave us an extension to 24. We meet 25, but we get an extension on October 24.
Yeah, and that's what I'm talking about on this one, too, the 24th.
October 24, extension till October. All right, very well. Okay, can I get a motion?
So the motion is to continue until 9/25, 24, and to extend the time for the board to make a decision until 10/24, 24.
All right, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see you, hopefully guys ready on the 21st. Thank you.
So I handed all that out.
We'll move to 21-23 Angela McEwan, reconsideration of application 386 Main Street. All right, Counselor, public hearing still open, name and address, and it's yours.
Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. I did send in something today, so, but it really was just making sure that our record for today and us speaking to it, I mean, it was stuff that you guys already probably knew. To refresh you, this is the Big White House that's over on Main Street that we've renovated, created a multifamily there. And then we had a decision where it was a 3-0-2, so there was two abstaining on the vote, so it was negative determination. And we came back to you trying to seek a reconsideration. Town Counsel stepped in, said we need to go to Planning Board. So we did go to Planning Board. So in the packets, you see the decision from Planning Board, which said that the Planning Board has voted to accept the premises that substantive changes has occurred. So the second application for the project at the above referenced address to the ZBA is acceptable at this time, prior to the two-year waiting period. So we've checked that box within the statute. Now we're working on, you can be looking at the substance of the repetitive petition. And if you did look through anything that was in the Planning Board and what I sent over today, we do have a 1-6 interest now in the T-shaped parcel. So we do have ownership of that. And so, you know, we're in a position that we're, we're happy to discuss with the board, but we're going again from that T-shaped parcel because we've talked in length with you on peer review, how we can't go from Main Street. And I know we have opposition who is saying that it's overburdening the easement and that you have to make decision, is this going to be, you know, putting a burden on the other tenant-in-common owners. So what I submitted today was basically, I looked at all the case law within the opposition, and they're very specific that, that it depends on the situation. So the Brady case, which is what opposition counsel is talking about, was a case where there were 20 other co-owners of a shoreline. And they wanted to put a big boardwalk in, very different than us trying to pave and just slightly improve, widen, well, really just make it the 20 feet that the fire department, so we're not putting up a structure and trying to impede on anyone else's use.
Brady versus who?
So it's Brady versus City of Gloucester.
Okay.
And like I said, they were looking for a special permit for construction of a stone patio on a rocky shoreline, shorefront area. And the plaintiffs were going for this in front of the board. And again, there were 20 other, you know, units. So that was a big case that they were going for.
Yeah, he wants...
I wonder, I just, I was asking permission to stop you. So from High Street to the property, it's kind of a whole separate parcel, it's shaped like a T.
It is a separate parcel. If you remember, we purchased, we, there were back taxes and we bought it.
You now have clean title to 1-6 ownership.
Correct.
And you mentioned you want to widen it. Is it an existing 20-foot wide piece? And it's just not used 20 feet? Or are you going to take an 18-foot thing or a 12-foot thing and...
Yeah, so I believe it talks about the 20 feet and within the deeds.
It exists as 20 feet, it's, I'm sorry, on paper, it's 20 feet. In reality, it's 12 or 14 or whatever, so you want to use the whole 20 feet.
And I have extended to opposing counsel, we've tried to discuss a little bit about how can we work with the others, you know, do they not want to pave? Do they want something different? Do they want fencing? Do they want abreviated? So we are trying that, but not necessarily getting anywhere. They're still saying that's going to be overburdening and that you as the board can make the decision on that. I take the stance that that is a civil matter, that the courts would have to decide. It's not your duty to decide.
That's true.
And that's what the Brady case says, too, so.
That's why I was asking if it's an...
Well, we don't want the burden.
It's 20 feet already.
Yes.
That's all, that's really, that was my question.
Yep.
You're exactly right, we don't want the burden to decide.
The case, the Brady case says that zoning authorities are not the arbiters of the, basically, yeah, of private property disputes between landowners. That's civil.
I agree.
So we did, now we have 1-6. You guys were concerned about, well, do you have ownership? What is going on here? We did a full title review on it. You know, we're still working on the other six through a main probate, which takes time. So we should eventually be the 1/3.
All right. So are you going to bring the application back the way it is? I mean, we're just going to continue and reopen it, right?
Well, I guess that's something maybe we want to talk to Town Counsel and make sure procedurally it's correct because I know I brought it to you guys and I had to go to Planning Board.
Section 16 clearly says, if you care, okay from Planning Board, you come back and reinstate the application.
Yeah.
We okay with the rules?
I have a question on that.
I do have an attorney for this particular...
Okay, so it is clear and we're okay with it. Counselor, just give me a minute before we go through you. Troy, you have a question?
I do not.
Jimmy?
Yeah, my question is, if people came because they were, they were given by Certified Mail public notice, and they came to every meeting and they sat at a meeting where a vote was taken and in their brain, the decision has been made. Now we're reopening it and we're not re-contacting them. I think there's some, I think there's some obligation to...
We'll send notice.
Re-advertise.
Correct. Yeah, it says you could reapply. It doesn't say, like...
But we're reopening.
We are, public hearing's still open. However, it wasn't closed, so she, she doesn't have to reapply. Counsel don't have to reapply because it's still open. However, as a courtesy, we might have to send notices to the others.
It's fine, I wouldn't want them saying that they didn't get notice or know about a hearing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, you have a question?
No.
Richard?
None at this time.
Okay. On the neighbors, anyone in here in favor of this matter, in favor? Here and none? All right.
No.
Okay, sir, you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
You want to come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name is David Field, 12 Wittermore Ave, Onset, Mass. I'm involved in the, in the project because I've been in a relationship with Angela who bought the property. And I just want to fill in a little bit what happened. It's three years ago, I came before this board to get a garage put on my place in Onset. And the town was wonderful to work for, this board was wonderful to work for. Sonia was wonderful. Angela came down, seen the property. She seen that, she was looking at a property to buy in East Boulevard on a foreclosure. We went to the auction on a Wednesday, and there was 10 bidders. She bought the property for $370. She sold her father's house in Brockton, did a 1031 exchange. When we bought it, there was a deed stamped to the deed that we bought for 386, 388 Main Street for the 20-foot T-shape. And it was made out to the loves, the deeds. And it said that the two neighbors on High Street had a 1/3 interest. The property at 386, 388 Main Street had a 1/3 interest. And the, I believe their name is, the people to the right, Reed's, had a 1/3 interest, but it was 20 feet. So I went down there and I took a look at it, and I could see where the stone wall came along there. And there was 20-foot stone wall came out. And it looked like somebody put loom to shorten that 20-foot bound. So when I looked at the deed, when it said the loves, there was no deed restriction in there. It said that the house at 386, 388 Main Street was built by the Bumpus in 1734. In 1962, Toby the banker sold the property. They made it into a multifamily home. The property on High Street, 171, they built the house in 1952. And then the existing house was already there, the Reed's. So for many years, they renovated into a multifamily. And I just couldn't figure out when we got it, when we went...
What's your point, what are you trying to get me, give me the point?
I came to the town of Wareham to find out who owned that easement. And they said, Mr. Field, no one paid taxes on that property since 2002.
Yeah, but this is, this is a civil matter, it has nothing to do with us. Either we give you or don't give you, it doesn't make it legal. This is the wrong place to argue it. This is a civil matter, has to be argued in court, not with us.
Okay, so the final thing that I want to say on that, we ended up buying it, and the attorney's been very good. I hired JC Engineer and I set up what they even want. I sat down with the building commissioner, and he said to Angela and I, by right, we could have 15 units on that property if we can jack them all together. I thought it would be better fit if we put duplexes on there for the area. So all I was trying to say is, we're willing to do anything that the town and the neighbors want. But with JC Engineer, we spent $60,000, they won't let us go there. So I'm just asking the board and the neighbors and the town, anything we need to do, we're willing to do to help because we put a lot of...
That's a good, good way to approach it. All right, thank you. All right, anyone against? I guess a lot, sir, is the counsel representing you?
Yes.
No, you separate than the counsel? All right, come forward. Counsel, you got to give me a minute. Go ahead, sir, come forward. State your name and address for the record, and just please...
Ray Robinson.
And be to the point.
My address is 171 High Street.
Okay.
I want to talk about the road. The road is 20 feet wide.
Okay.
And I know, and you know, if there was an ambulance stopped on there, all traffic would stop, and it's the only way in and out. Now, if you go and look at the property from Main Street, and I'm sure you have, if you look up the hill, on the right-hand side, the hill is a lot lower slope. It lends itself to a road. I don't know why everything's going to be dependent on going in and out, a single road with no other access. The station is very dangerous. 20 feet is not a, not a road.
Well, actually, 20 feet if it's paved, it's a legal road in Wareham.
For two-way traffic?
For subdivision up to 24 houses. For subdivision up to 24 houses. But I understand your case. I'm just, I know you don't like the answer, but that's, this is our bylaws. If you pave 20 feet, you could do a subdivision up to 24 homes. But you do have a case. We will visit and revisit and revisit. And I totally understand.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me via Zoom?
I can't hear you well, so...
Very good. I'll be brief and my understanding is this is being continued. So we'll take a look at the applicant's attorney's letter and be able to respond. But for the record, my name is Attorney Christopher Alvin for Jonathan Silverstein. We represent the Reed's, who are the abutters to this property. I think that there's just two issues that the board should think about between now and the next hearing. Number one is what we were talking about as far as the T shape. And I understand counsel's position that, you know, this isn't really a decision for the board. This is a private property issue. However, when you ever see a special permit for development of property, you want to make sure that the owner is the one applying for the permit. And in this case, a large part of the development, i.e. the road going to serve the project, is actually owned by an abutter who has not signed off on this application and actually opposes it. So that's something that the board really needs to consider. Counsel, my sister was talking about overburdening. That is one of our arguments, but that's really relative to easements. This is sort of a unique situation where we have a fee ownership in the T-shaped parcel. So it's not a typical, this is a private way where we have some sort of interest, a legal interest, and it's Derek Lee fee statute and we can all use the private way. This is a unique situation where we actually own the T-shaped parcel and it's our position that you can't develop that without permission of the other, of the folks. But not to get away from the, probably the most important issue in front of this board, which is the criteria for a use variance. And I know what this board understands, what the criteria is for a use variance. And it's obviously our position that they don't meet any of the criteria. And obviously, this board knows that they need to meet all three points of criteria, owing circumstances to soil conditions, shape or topography, a little enforcement, literally enforcement when involves a substantial hardship. And the relief may be corrected without a substantial detriment to the public good. We don't think that the applicant with this petition meets any of those criteria's.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Again, the T shape comes in play and I don't know how to answer.
Yeah, just to respond to my brother, I'd be happy and we're trying to, you know, talk offline. I was talking to Attorney Silverstein. As far as if we can't have this development because we don't own it all, that's just incorrect. In the Brady case that they cited, you could have a portion and use a portion. You don't have to own the whole thing. It's, it's not a requirement to receive a special permit that you're the 100% owner and you know that.
Does the Brady case, they overburdened and they were able to?
Again, this is a completely different circumstance. We're talking about like waterfront, rocky coast, and someone's trying to put a stone boardwalk and there's 20 abutters. This is, you know, we're talking an entranceway to a, to, you know, housing. So for me, I mean, I will do my best to find some other cases, maybe that will help you out. But again, that's my review of it. I'm happy to send over the Brady case for everyone to look at. And I have in my package, just my interpretation, too, so...
Do you mind writing in narrative, a small, one page, maybe we'll run it by counsel? And counsel, what's his name?
The one that's online? I'm sorry, I forget.
Counsel, do you hear me?
Attorney Alvin, I do, Mr. Chairman.
All right, maybe you could write the narrative, what you think, and we could bring both your narratives to the town council, see what he thinks because we don't know what to think in this matter, unfortunately.
I think it's already been done by both bodies, hasn't it?
No.
I mean, I think he should look at that case and make it, I know that they're in mind, yeah.
So counsel, can you write the narrative?
Yes, that would be, we would appreciate that opportunity. We have said it in certain ways, but we will put a narrative on this specific issue, absolutely.
Yeah, very specific on that matter only. Don't go up on the use variance or nothing, just the easement so our counsel can give us some directions, which way to go.
Understood.
All right. That being said, anything, counsel? Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public want to speak against this matter?
I'm for it.
All right. Going back to board, so I do recommend that we re-advertise. I mean, resend notices for the neighbors on the paper.
Okay.
Public hearing's still open.
So abutters and publication?
Publication, no fees because you already...
New one days, right?
Yeah.
She needs, so it won't make next hearing?
Yeah, and you have an extension until October 11. So let me see, when's the next hearing? Mine, that's going to take a long time, so mine as well, give an extension.
Till the end of October?
No, more than that. I would do till November 21st.
Okay.
All right. That being said, any board question before we get a motion to continue?
Your suggestion of 21st for the meeting, and what about a date for the board to make a decision? December 25th?
No, I thought the 21st was the decision deadline.
Pardon me?
Right, November, what did I say, November?
You said November 21 for the next, for the next time for them to be in front of this?
No, that's for the decision, deadline decision. And you're going to need...
To, I would ask Ms. Reposo, how?
Yeah, most likely October... October 9?
Yep.
All right. So can we get a motion to continue till October 9 with the deadline extension November 21?
Yes, so moved.
So we have a motion by Jim to continue till October 9. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see you then. Counsel, on next hearing, if it's possible, you attend personally.
Sonia?
Yes.
Because it's, it's hard to communicate online. Yes, Sonia?
Thank you, we will.
She can't make it. Okay, so the 23rd, redo your motion, Jimmy.
I move we continue until October 23rd.
Yep.
24, 2024. And that we move the deadline for decision by this board to November 21st, 2024.
Okay, you heard the motion by Jim till the 23rd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So it is the 20, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Next up, 3424 Farrar's Realty.
Okay, the next hearing's 34-24 Farrar's Realty Group. That's on the site plan review, 3037 Cranberry Highway. I'm going to recuse myself on this matter. And GAF, represent Jimmy, with chair. Okay, very good.
You're going to stay here in the room and comment or you're going to...
I'll sit there.
Okay.
Okay.
Very well.
So this is, this is Cape Cod Gas?
Yeah.
Out, out by Hong Kong Island?
Hong Kong Island.
Oh, there is no Hong Kong Island. Okay. And there's nothing, there's nothing new under the sun here.
So Mr. Chairman, for the record, Bob Rogers, GAF Engineering on behalf of the applicant.
Yep.
So since the continued public hearing, the last continued public hearing on August 28th, we've made two very small changes to the plans. They were submitted to the planning office last Wednesday on the 4th. And so there was a request from Onset Fire to eliminate some landscaping. We added a crushed stone strip up against the building. That was requested by Lieutenant, I believe, Snagger. And I see an email in the system from him saying that his concerns have, his concerns to this point have been satisfied. So he's fine with the project. I think the other request came from the peer review engineer, but so on sheet 12 of the plan set, we added a path to enter and exit the site for a fuel tanker truck.
From Cranberry Highway?
Correct, yes. Coming from Cranberry Highway, it's the one-way, new one-way divided road. And so that tanker truck gets, gets in and out.
Who gets in and out?
Gets in and out in front of the fueling islands. And so, you know, I believe that has satisfied all of the peer review concerns. We have the email correspondence from Lieutenant Snagger. And so those were the only two items that changed since August 28th.
If you bear with me for one second, I see Ms. Reposo's probably trying to look something up. Sonia, can I get your attention for a second? Do you know if we got a letter from the fire department in the file here saying that there's...
I jumped off this file. I got an email that's in the board.
Okay.
It should be on the website.
Okay, so it does exist.
I know, yes.
I brought a copy if...
No, that's all right. I just, I'm good with that. I just wanted, I wanted to confirm on the record that the letter exists and it's, and it's on, it's online.
It's online.
It's online, that's all I need to know.
It's in my email.
Need a... Okay.
Magnifying glass to read it.
Okay. Yeah, because it was an email and...
Right.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, so we're good there. The request from the peer review was just to show the path, how the trailer, how the carrier is going to get in there with the fuel.
Fuel trailer.
You've shown that. Any questions from the board members?
No, but there's somebody out there.
I see somebody waving at me, but I'm...
So just through you, Chair, I'm just curious, there was a lot in the emails that I was reading, wasn't there something in there about the planning board or the selectmen? So in the selectmen, they, they gave a list of reasons that they weren't in favor.
The selectmen are not in favor?
I believe it was. Planning board.
Planning board.
Planning board.
I mean, I thought it was the selectmen.
Was it that they were not in favor or was it that...
The planning board, they had three points that would be, I checked them yesterday as well. They provided comments yesterday for Monday night's meeting. Did you like it? Oh, your email looked down.
I'm not reading my emails, yeah.
It's on the town website as well.
Yeah, so I reviewed that document as well and it, so it seems to me that those were all issues that were vetted, discussed, decided upon. Their concerns basically were taken care of by the granting of the use variance. And, and so there's a lot of language in the decision that addresses the items that they touched on. And it just seems like...
Redundant?
It seems like the planning board did not know that the ZBA had already issued the use variance. If they had read the use variance decision like I did, they would see that these items have already been decided by the ZBA.
I will, I'll put it into the record that our chair has recused himself because he has advised with this applicant or discussed with this applicant and therefore doesn't want any shadow of a conflict on the application. I'll put on the record that since I've been on the board for, I don't know how many years, as many, as many as anybody else on this board or more than, other than our chair, I've only seen the planning board want to review twice. And both times, it was when our chairman was recusing himself on something that he was personally involved with. I don't have a problem with other boards making sure that there's no favoritism. I do have a problem with there being prejudice. So I'm just putting it on the record. Any other questions from the members of the board? Anybody in the room here that has a comment in favor or opposed to this application? I personally have heard enough of somebody's willing to close the public portion of this hearing.
So moved.
Motion's been made to close the public portion of this hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Troy Larson and seconded by Richard Semple. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Do we need to hear back from the peer review?
Well done.
Well done.
Aye.
Okay, so the public portion of this hearing is closed. The only discussion from here forward will be amongst the board members that are present. There's nobody online. Any questions?
I have none.
Any questions, Mr. Conti, Mr. Semple?
Not, no.
Then we need a motion to either grant and approve this application as presented or any other motion that anybody would care to make. Again, when I'm acting as chair, I hate to be the person making the motion, so...
So I make a motion to approve with this applicant and with standing conditions?
Motion's been made by Mr. Semple to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
Richard?
Aye.
You got it.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Chair, recused. How do you spell recused? Is that a Q or...
R-E-C-U, I see. All right, we move forward to 22-24 Five Star Golf Car and Utility Vehicle LLC, 161 Marion Road. Anyone here on this matter? Okay, I heard, I'm not sure, they having a problem with the title, so they didn't really secure the property.
Did you hear from the last meeting, to the last night? Did I haven't heard from you, Chuck?
Sonia, can you get that?
Yeah, yeah, sit there.
We need to hear you on the record.
They want to record you. So you want to take a microphone over to your table? You want us to get it for you?
Oh, don't talk. All right, she's going to, anyway...
We muted her.
I think it's fair we continue this matter for them. What's the deadline?
This is Five Star Golf?
Yeah, hold on.
Motion to continue?
One second, let's see. That's 90 days from the opening. Do we have an extension on that?
Damn. We need an extension from the applicant to, for the decision, is that what you're
I believe there was one granted, but I don't know for when.
So if I make a motion to continue, it'll be subject to...
I think we are good until 9:25. I'll speak to Attorney Griffin tomorrow.
All right.
My motion is to continue until 9:25, subject to the applicant granting an extension for the board to make a decision if necessary.
Okay, before we go forward, anyone here for this matter? For or against? None? All right, we heard the motion for Mr. Okavachi to continue until the 25th, the 22-24 Five Star Golf. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Christopher Conti, aye.
Jimmy, I mean Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So that's continued.
Next up, 32-24 VMB.
Okay, 32-24 VMB Property LLC, 3138 Cranberry Highway, also known as Town Tavern. All right, name and address for the record?
Hi, David Newhall, Cocker Design Group, 195 Oldham Street, Pembroke. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Dave?
David Barry, 48 Highland Circle Halifax.
Okay, very well. Public hearing still open. Where are we at since last time? How'd you make an out of site plan?
So we submitted updated site plans, responses to peer review, updated architectural plans and a stamped landscape plan on Wednesday, 9/4, I believe. It ended up getting emailed to you on Thursday, 9/5. So we understand that you haven't had adequate time to review the plans, so if you would like us.
You just submitted on 9/4?
Yes.
All right.
Copy of this by email last Thursday, it was the last email I got.
Yeah, so if.
Killed my computer.
Alan Major, Mr. Phil number two. Name and address for the record and if you could fill us in.
Yep, Paul Mattos with Alan the Major Associates, 10 Main Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts.
Okay.
Yeah, they submitted revised plans and a whole package on Wednesday, 9/4. We got it in our office on 9/5, so we haven't had a chance to digest the information that was submitted, review it or anything like that, so we haven't provided any, we don't have any additional input to add today.
Well, unless we have a review from him, most likely we're going to continue. You think you could have some for us by next Wednesday, so we could hear on the 25th?
Yes, not a problem.
Okay, that's, that's good. Let me go to board questions before we go to public. Troy, do you have a question?
No.
Jimmy?
On a quick look at what's been submitted, it looks like they moved the proposed outdoor seating from one end of the building to the other. When I looked at the plans prior, the only real objection I had was the distance between that outdoor seating and Chippewa Way, so seeing that moved, it sure does appear that this applicant wants to work within and for the town's best interest. Thank you.
Very well. Richard?
I'm all set.
Christopher?
So, yeah, I did look at the plans, it looks like they did get rid of the patio and they put in a deck and it looks like they have three options for the deck. Which option?
We finalized, I believe it was the one with the bar at the center of the, the deck itself. I don't have it in front of me.
Fully covered?
Just the deck is covered, just the bar is covered.
Just the bar is going to be covered?
And then the rest of it will be umbrellas around on the tables.
Here it is, here it is. Okay. All right. For. I had a chance to look at it online, so.
For next hearing, if you provide at least one two-by-three copy?
I do have them, Mr. Chair, they're in the office, they're, I apologize, the boxes.
That's okay, because we required this so we could read it, no big deal.
He did have them, sorry.
We got those old guy eyes.
I like the big ones too.
All right, so Paul, you guys are going to go through this matter, curbing, landscaping, all these things and you have your comment.
Yep.
Okay, before we go further, further, on the public, anyone in favor of this matter? Anyone against? No ones against? Fire Department, any comment on that?
There's a lot that now, stuff that now, for that, that location. I just have to see, I have to print it.
Okay, yeah, we, we did email, I'll, I'll re-mail again.
All right, very good. So he needed, just for the record, Captain Sniger, he needed Swept Baron, I guess?
Yeah.
All right, very good. All right.
Going to the 25th?
25th, we'll be ready, I guess, to hear you again on 25th. Okay. So that being said, anything else from the board before we continue? Richard, Chris, Troy?
I'm all set, sir.
Can we get a motion?
Motion to continue this matter until 9:25, 24.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim to continue?
Mr. Chair, in the back it says, I think, Town Tavern variance, it says 9:20, 24?
All right, so we're gonna need an exten, we're gonna need also a written extension till October 24th. You will write an email, the engineer, yet you gave us a deadline extension until October 24, 2024.
Okay, just an email to Sonia?
Yes, and you agree to it?
Yes, we agree to it.
Okay, very well. All right, thanks, Chris.
So the motion is amended to include continuance of the time for the board to make a decision until 10:24, 24.
Okay, that being said, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see you on the 25th of September. Thank you. What did we do, Five Star, we continued?
Five Star, we continued, yeah.
And I'm getting dementia. I forgot it.
I forgot we did.
We did it so quick and so efficiently, you know? You were reading and you were.
These are the ones that were handed to us for Warren.
Oh, that's Warren.
They were handed to us by GAF.
So let's put this back the way it is until next time.
You got the Warren thing back here. You're getting so good at this, you do it, you do it without even thinking, huh?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, huh? All right, 41-24 Kim Evelyn Special Permit or Variance, 9 Maple Ave.
9 Maple Ave.
All right, name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Evelyn Kim and 9 Maple Avenue.
I'm Harrison Lovitzky and I believe our engineer is on Zoom as well.
Okay, very well. Public hearing's still open, so what, what, how do you make an out of the progress or what would you ask to have?
At the last meeting, it was requested that we send a full logistics plan, which we did submit. That just goes over where everything is going to be stored, there'll be no parking in public areas, all the safety precautions for not only the localized area near our house, but the road leading up to it, and then also just a kind of like scheduling information, timeline information, everything like that.
All right, Commissioner, do you have a chance to look at them?
Sorry, did you ask me something? Mr. Chairman, I did review it, it's, it's not very detailed, but it'll suffice.
It will? All right, for the record, these are comments, Mr. Commissioner Paul Turner. All right, go to the board, what do you think Troy on that project? That project, I guess they need the logistic plan because it's tight.
Yeah, I looked, I looked, I read all the stuff, I might not have any questions with that.
Okay, Jimmy?
I have, I have no questions.
Chris?
I have no questions, I looked at it.
Richard?
No, no questions.
All right. Do you have the Commissioner a letter, Jimmy, on that matter? Do you have it?
Wait a minute, which, which one you were, were on?
Kim.
Yeah, 4124.
Mr. Akavachi, you won't find the file, there were no hard copies dropped off.
What do you mean, no hard copies? On the application, anything?
He didn't, he only submitted it, they'll be online and I emailed it to you as well.
So that, they've kind of changed the system and they've got everybody doing everything online now?
Well, but no, the engineer actually, he just emailed it, the, this one wasn't, it's still online, it's not in viewpoint yet. He only emailed it to us. He emailed it to me.
So we, we won't have?
It's online.
We won't have hard copies no more?
Going forward, well, you will, you'll have the hard copies, but this engineer, he emailed it and I put it on the town website. He never dropped off the hard copies in the office.
I just want to see the Commissioner a letter, that's all.
The Commissioner's, or the denial letter?
Correct.
It should be on the file.
So we know what we're granting or not granting?
I didn't bring it.
All right, hold on.
I didn't bring the file.
So, yeah, you can be looking while I'm looking, but I'd probably find it.
I have it if you want.
Was it one page? Do you remember? There it is. Notice a violation. Ta-da. Is this what you want to see?
All right, that's the violation, not the.
Yeah.
Not the.
Not a request for a variance, it's not a request for a special permit, it's.
All right, so it is an MR3, it's an existing non-conforming proj, law. They have density building coverage, they need a building coverage relief, site setback So if the board, under 1353, if the board finds it not detrimental, substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, we will act upon it as a special permit. If they find it detrimental, we'll act on it as a variance. That being said, anyone in the audience against or in favor of this project? All right, want to come forward, please? Have a seat, state your name.
Yeah, good evening, John Coe, 5 Maple Ave, wants it.
Okay, so what brings you here tonight?
So I guess part of the questions been answered, though.
You gotta talk to us or not to the lady?
The logistics plan is online then, because we haven't heard anything about any of the logistics plans. I'm a direct abutter, so it's going to impact me directly.
Right.
I have no idea what the plans are, so I guess that was answered, it's online, I have to go online and.
They are, they are online since August 28, 2024.
Okay, great, that answers that.
Okay.
The other question I had, again, being a layperson, the, from what I understood was when we improved our property, we had to conform to the current footprint because we're in the flood zone.
Right.
And on these folks' property, the front deck was extended to almost the seawall, which is not the original footprint of the deck. Now is that going to be corrected once the property gets raised or, or were they allowed to extend the deck prior?
I, I really don't know anything about your property, but we could have the engineer answer that question or you can answer. Can you answer or the engineer?
I can answer it.
Go ahead.
It's not, it's fully not extended to the seawall. We did take the existing footprint, the plans show what the new one will look like, it's generally in the same location.
Does that answer your question?
Well, that's incorrect, because it is, the current, the current deck is almost up against the seawall, almost directly impacting it, and I have photos from the property prior that basically show yard around the deck, so, and again, I don't, on the plans that Josh, I believe it's Josh Farady, sent to me via email, it shows the deck in the original configuration that it is now, up against the seawall.
Yeah, go ahead.
You keep using the word original. When you say original, are you talking prior to this applicant doing any work? Are you talking about when the house was built 100 years ago? Or what's the, what's the word original referring to?
When, when they purchased the property.
The way it was when they purchased it?
Yeah.
So you're saying that there's been changes to the deck since they bought the property?
Yes. And. I mean, if it's been approved.
Pardon me?
I said if it's been approved, that's okay.
It's been approved.
It, it has? Okay.
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, hang, hang on a minute, I'm gonna turn to the Commissioner. Do you know if there's any alterations to the property that were done without a permit? Are you aware of any?
I think he has a notice of violation, yeah.
That's how this all started.
Pardon me?
That's how this whole issue started.
Okay.
That's the violation you gave me.
That's the violation?
Let me see it again, please.
It's right here. Let me get to it quick. Here, is this it? No.
That's, that's what I want to see, yeah?
That's what you wanted to see before when you asked me and then I gave you what you didn't ask for.
Here it goes, I have it right here.
You got them both?
So the applicant started to remodel the house with no permits, it was stopped, they applied for permits, they were informed about the substantial improvement from FEMA and they exceeded the 50%. So that's what the notice of violation is for. So they exceeded the 50% improvement that FEMA regulates these houses.
Right.
So therefore, they're in violation of the building code, so that house now, since it's substantially improved, needs to be raised above the flood plain.
And that's, that's what's in front of us now, they are raising?
Correct.
You are raising the house?
That's right, yeah, that's what we're here for.
It's to satisfy that.
Going back to my question about the deck, I'm looking at this photo here, it's an aerial photo, there's three, there's three houses in the picture, all, all three of them fronting on the water. To what I would, I'm going by memory here, what I would guess would be to the east is the, oh, yeah. To the south would be the water, to the north would be the street and to the west would be a street. Okay. There's three houses in this picture, is the house, the subject house, the one in the middle?
That's my house.
You are the one in the middle?
Yes.
Okay, so which one are you guys?
Closest to the marina.
Yeah.
You're the closest to the marina, you were, so you got the marina on one side of your?
That's right.
The water in front of, to your south and a, and a, so you're at the end of that dead-end street?
Right.
Okay. And so does this aerial photograph show the deck?
They missed out on that.
Which one that has?
This one.
All right.
I can't tell if.
I personally gotta get familiar with that project.
Yeah, I think we need to do, I think, I can't tell.
So explain to me, what are you doing now? You're gonna raise it per FEMA regulation?
Yeah, so on the, sorry.
Go ahead, and then you're gonna add the deck to it?
No, so on the deck situation, the plans show what the new deck's front and back, which the, the front is just a landing to enter the house, will, the, you know, to size. So that, I would assume would hopefully be approved if we're ultimately approved. I think the question about the deck originally was they were concerned about us changing the original footprint. I don't, we didn't try to change the footprint of the deck, like if you look at the deck now, it's not a great use of the space, like if I were to change it, I would have extended it, which I'm not asking for, I'm just saying. So that's not, but that's also really not material to us, like I'm not, if we need to move, like I don't, I wasn't really too keen, like that's not a big deal on the size of the deck. What we're aiming for tonight is simply to satisfy the violation by raising the house above the flood line elevation per the FEMA code. And then that, those are the plans that we've submitted, which would raise it and, you know, correct this.
So, so as far as setbacks on decks, et cetera, et cetera, that would be part of the, that would be part of the plan that he submitted and you'd have, you'd have pointed out if it needed a variance for any setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not following.
So the person that came up to speak believes that there's a problem with the deck, whether he's right or wrong, I'm kind of trying to figure out. I don't know if he's, he, he believes it, he's not saying it's a fact. We've asked the Commissioner, I've asked the Commissioner, if the plans that were submitted violated setbacks, would that have been note brought out to be put in front of us? And he said, yes, it hasn't been put in front of us, there's no request for a variance. So from that, I would draw the conclusion, there's not a setback problem. Where the deck is and where the.
There's definitely a setback.
Pardon me?
There's definitely a setback issue. May I see the letter that, that you're reading?
Pardon me?
May I see the letter that I wrote?
Yeah.
He, he's not reading the letter, he's, he's concluding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's concluding.
Concluding, you know.
All right, let me, let me ask a question. There's a violation, what's the violation other than FEMA? There's a deck violation, setback?
The violation is the FEMA issue, so, so we're going to take care of that, the way we take care of that is by raising the structure. The structure's a pre-existing non-conforming, so they're working in the setback and they're actually increasing it by one of the stair, stairways, because as the building goes up in height.
Stairway goes out.
Stairway goes out more.
Okay.
So I believe it was a side, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Right. That's existing non-conforming, if we feel.
Special permit or variance, correct.
Okay, go into the deck issue that is on violation, it needs a setback issue, or that's the issue?
The letter that I wrote was for a side deck.
Okay.
Side, side lot. As far as the deck that the, the abutters bringing up, I am thinking back during, when we first went out to the site, that was brought up, that the deck was enlarged from the original one.
From the original one, existing.
Yeah. When the applicants bought the house, it was one size, the local inspector, George The local inspector, George Stewart, believes that it was enlarged.
Okay.
So right now, it's in a new state, it's been rebuilt. Then the violation came that they went over the substantial improvement threshold, so now the whole thing has to be lifted.
The whole deck has to be lifted?
Everything has to be lifted.
Deck, the house, everything.
Let me ask you a question, the original deck, did it confirm with setback?
No.
So it's an existing non-conforming?
Correct.
All right.
That's okay.
So, and raising it, it felt, if we give them relief from 1352, they could do a special permit?
Yes.
All right. So the, so that is the, that's the thing. They're gonna, there is a violation on the deck, okay? And when they raise it, they have to raise the deck with them, apparently.
Is it a violation, or is it a non-conformity?
It's a violation, and it's non-conformity. However, it's an existing non-conforming, okay? So, because all the lots are small, you probably, your house, it encroaches. Our bylaws, you could extend the non-conformity either by variance or by special permit. Variance is hard to grant, you have to prove hardship, and so on, and so on. If the board feels it's not substantially detrimental to you, we will act upon it as a special permit. Special permit easier to grant, hard to fight in court. If the board feels it's detrimental, we'll act on it as a variance. And it's usually, you have a strong case in court if you appeal them. So that's where we're heading. We need, had a long night, we need to, I personally need to refresh, I've been away for a while. I just want to go over the plans carefully. I need to get the bigger plans from the office and go through it. And most likely, we're gonna have to continue. And we'll come back in two weeks, you will not be notified again, so you have to come on your own, you won't get a card again. That being said, I want to ask my board members, see what they think about this. Troy?
I have no comment.
Jimmy?
Um, I think we should continue and, and make efforts to get there and walk all over the property like we were the owners and look at everything.
Richard, you usually walk.
Yep.
Did you go look at it?
I.
You've been sick?
Not, because between the avenue and the street and everything else, apparently, I was looking at the wrong house. So I'm gonna go back out, and I'm gonna go to the right house that I was looking at. Because there's, in, in all our paperwork, it goes from street to avenue, and for some reason.
Yeah.
All right. Chrissy?
I'm okay with continuing.
Continue, and I'm gonna visit the site. We'll visit the site, we'll continue the matter, and we'll come back with some broader idea of what's happening. Anyone else on the public want to speak in this matter?
One more comment for the record, to the owners of the property. The board members are gonna go at their own time, at their own discretion. We're not going as a group, we're not gonna have an appointment and go down there and be there as a group. We're gonna go, he may go on one day and I another, and we don't want, we don't mean to be intrusive, it's just more convenient that way.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we want, I mean, we just gotta look around, so.
Yeah, sure. No, it's fine.
Okay.
But we haven't closed the public, and the guy that was speaking is, is.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to say, if, it's very tight, if you need to enter my property to view, like, the front deck in those areas, you, you have my permission to enter my property.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring a lawn chair and lime rickety and.
Sit on the deck and.
Straw hat.
It's okay.
Anything else you want to add, ma'am, sir? All right, can we get a motion to continue until the 25th?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Richard, motion by Jim. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
We should have loaded the 24th, whatever.
The 25th is gonna be busy.
The 25th, yeah.
All right, we'll see you on the 25th, thank you.
I think I'm going on vacation.
Go, go with Veronica.
I think I won't be here on 9/25.
What's that?
Who won't be here? You won't be here?
You.
What are we gonna do?
Where, where, where are you gonna be, Cuba, Lisbon?
Barcelona.
Barcelona, Barcelona.
Barca.
Italy.
Every time I hear the word Barcelona, I think of Freddie Mercury, Freddie.
All right, new public hearing, 42-24 Ellis Francis Jr., variance, Seven Meadows Ave.
Anything from that last one that I need to put in the folder, anybody's got?
I want to bring it with me. Sonia, we need that two-by-three.
I don't have them.
You gotta ask him.
The engineer.
That's, that's.
I thought they were in the office.
You told me it's in the office.
Get that out of here.
The fire was in there.
I've got a place for it.
Can you make sure he gets us one? I can't read that.
Take your time, it's not like I just got here.
Anything here to try?
Sonia, can you make sure we get one?
I've been going through and I'm getting rid of my legs a little bit.
Mrs. Raposo, can you make sure we get one? Please? Okay. All right.
As a favor, as a favor, she's doing it as a favor.
All right. You shouldn't take it without two-by-three plans. Don't stamp it. Huh?
Don't stamp it?
Don't, don't give it, I mean, don't accept the application.
She, there's a, I'm sticking up for her again, there's a little bit of a tug, and the planning department coordinator, or whatever the title is that they made up. There's a, there's an effort to move to a new, they want to do everything online. And because one side thinks it's easier to do it online and just have everything on the computer. So they're kind of pushing the applicants away from bringing the hard copy in, and we, we still want it, so.
Can I tell them that?
I know, but how, how are we gonna review plans online? I mean, we have small screens unless we're bringing.
I'm bringing it up so that as we each individually go by the office, we should comment to the coordinator.
We will.
That, that we really do want that to happen, and.
All right, let's hear this one.
If we do it on, excuse me, through the chair, if we do do it online, that's fine, but there should be one set in the town hall that we can go in and look at.
Exactly, and that's the chair's question, and that's.
Don't continue to bring in paper copies, but you will no longer have a set, everything will be in viewpoint.
In viewpoint, yeah.
You will no longer have it.
So, we have to, we have to one at a time go be, Josh isn't here to defend himself, so we can pick on him now.
He's listening.
He's a good guy.
He's listening.
He's listening?
Sonia says, no, I'll bring you hard copies.
You think, you think I gotta change my story any if I see you sitting here?
I have to have the full size.
I tell Mr. Perry all the time, full size.
Package for each one of you, and I'll continue, until I get told no.
I've had paper handed to me, and I always know what to do with it.
All right, with that, we better get started.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta go.
It's, it's getting late.
Tomorrow's my birthday.
Ellis Francis Jr.
Yes, I'm Robert Perry, 191 Main Street, Wareham, and I represent Mr. Ellis. Mr. Ellis, introduce yourself.
Francis Ellis, 62 Silver Street, Cover, Massachusetts.
We have to read it for the record, just give us a minute.
I just had to find it, that's all. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 11th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 42-24 for a variance from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Francis Ellis Jr., K. Robert L. Perry, Esquire of 191 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a single-family dwelling at 7 Mattows Avenue, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham Assessors Map 110 Lot 9B in the CG zoning district.
All right, Mr. Perry, councillor, what is yours?
This is a variance you already granted a little over a year ago. And unfortunately, as a result of a couple of errors on behalf of my client, one which maybe is justified, and one which isn't, he did not meet his one year. I'm ask you to consider it again. The most important thing I've given you is the old variance, which of my exhibit G1 in this. And if I read from it, what the board said at the time is that the proposed project fits in with the character of this existing neighborhood. It doesn't create a substantial impact on the neighborhood. Further, you find the project meets the criteria for, under the zoning bylaw, and it meets the criteria for the variance under 48, Section 10. There's absolutely no change, other than once again, he didn't get started. The neighborhood issue is very simple. This is a residential neighborhood. You go up and down the street, and there's not a, a business in it, even though it's zoned commercial G. Meaning, he's got to build a business there. The residents are wild about that, they've all, they've appeared, they've written letters, and they say, you know, we'd like to have this nice little house he's gonna build on that lot. I believe, and I heard some of these hearings last year, that that had an awful lot to do with your consideration you gave to his petition. I'm asking you give the same consideration to it again, and maybe look at the language in the one-year thing and the way you, you write it here, because I don't think it complies with 48. Unless I read it wrong also, certainly possible. But there's absolutely no change. It's what it is, the neighbors would like the house there, he'd like to build a house there for his son. He has to get a license contract to pull the permit, he can't do it himself because it's not his residence, not going to be his residence. Other than that, I honestly don't see an issue with this one.
All right. You heard the councillor, so, that was a house one day at that point, we granted a variance. He got an extension, he didn't comply, it's dead, so it's a variance.
It's a variance. For you, variance.
Troy?
It was a variance that was granted prior, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's my exhibit G1 in your packet. You look above the third page, you'll see why the board sought it to grant it previously.
I remember it.
Troy?
Well, I wasn't here at the time, but, I mean, if it was granted before, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't.
Jimmy?
For the edification of my fellow member, this is, this is behind the Ford dealership.
Correct.
It's a street that goes in for, I don't know, at least 65 or 70 years that I'm aware of, it's been a little family neighborhood, it's been residential, even though it's always been zoned commercial strip. So, we originally denied them because it was the, the change of use in a, you know, they were putting a house in a commercial area, but then they came back and we went back, and we said, well, wait a minute.
Well, there's, but one thing missing too, that it's a non-conforming law, that's why we didn't, it needs a variance. Not only general commercial, it's a non-conforming use.
Undersized, we had a frontage, an oversized issue.
Unfortunately, there was a house on it, a single-family residence, and they tore it down and lost the two-year protection.
They tore it down in anticipation of?
Of being able to build a house.
Okay, so, so I have one question, now you're ready to build, you have plans? Do you, do you know what you're gonna build already?
Yes.
Do you have a builder?
Yes.
So you're ready to pull a permit if you got permission to pull a permit?
Ah, yes, yes.
Where's the plans?
Just gonna turn every, he has now, that he, he submitted to Paul, over to a builder to properly apply under his license.
Right, but where is the architecture plans?
Incidentally, the septic hole is already dug, the septic system is already in, I believe, approved. I mean, it's an ongoing project as it is, but not sufficient that the, the year was not lost.
So is it, is it a pre-existing foundation, or is it a new foundation?
Only the hole, no cement yet.
No cement, just the hole was dug?
No, we cemented without Paul's approval.
Okay, so the hole was dug, and the septic system is in?
The septic system is in, and I believe completed.
Yes, septic system is.
Is the septic system not enough to consider it an ongoing?
When did you put the septic?
Around 2017, I believe. Put the septic in, then I applied for the permit to take down the house. At that time, they told me, as long as I rebuilt it within the two years, I, I didn't have to leave a wall standing or anything. So I took down the house, I came back, and they said that I was past the two years. I went back and forth a little with Dave Fuquena, and I had the satellite images to show when the actual foundation left. But with COVID and everything.
All right.
I just put it to the back burner, and I walked away with it.
Right.
I get it, just, just.
I, I don't think we could, I'm not ready to make a vote tonight. I'm gonna need a certificate of compliance on your septic system.
It was with the old variance.
No, you gotta bring me a new one. Anything with old, we're not gonna review, you gotta bring new paperwork.
Okay.
I need an architecture plan for what you're gonna build, and a proposed site plan for a surveyor, how you're gonna lay on the ground. How you're gonna fit the foundation, how it's gonna lay.
I see the attorney grab, are you taking notes?
Well, the, the plan that I have given you from JC is the same exact plan submitted with the prior variance. Now, I want to look at my file, because maybe, maybe, I have the paperwork on.
We have a plan in the folder here.
I'm not positive I do, but I want to take a look here.
How old is the plan?
About a year and a half.
Richard, you have a question?
Nope, just going through that, I'm pretty sure that, I remember that we refused it, and then it came back. We realized that within the 500 feet of a road, or whatever it was, and then, so we approved it, and it just seems like it got away from him, and he's back here asking for forgiveness, and wants to continue. That's what I get out of it.
And you're okay with that?
Basically accurate.
Let me finish with, with, are you okay with it?
Yep, I'm, I'm.
I think I got a, I see a date on here.
December 6, 16.
2016?
Yes. That's the original plan, yeah.
We're gonna need an update, we don't know if the property changed, moved, we don't know. So you need to get us, or have Mr. Churchill stamp it, re, just write on it, revised, updated, something like this. We need something new, we can't go by plan that's 16, that's seven, eight years old. We don't know what changed since then on our property.
And he can, he can probably certify the septic as well.
Need a border health certificate.
Border health, well, okay.
Yeah, you want something from?
Councillor, let me make it easy for you.
Go ahead.
We need a new site plan, architecture plan, and border health certificate of compliance of the septic.
I got you.
And apparently, the border are okay with it, we're gonna need that.
I have no problem with that.
All right.
But what I think you're looking for is for Brad to take this plan that he gave me and say revised, like, tomorrow, whatever.
Right, and architecture plan what he's gonna build.
And something from the, through you, Chair, and something from the border health for the septic system.
Yeah.
You want to make sure it's not gonna require set, or any new thing?
You won't be able to get a permit without sign from the border health anyway, so you need.
I'm aware of that, but he had, he had that when he submitted to Mr. Tribunal.
It's not before, it's not with us.
Not a big deal, okay?
Anyway, it's more than two years, it's no good.
Okay.
It's no good, it needs to be updated. So do you know, you get the list, sir, Mr.?
Ellis.
Mr. Ellis, do you know what to get?
Yes.
Okay, site plan, architecture plan, because we're gonna send you, grant you a variance on that particular house you're gonna build. So you can't, you can't provide us with a colonial and go build a ranch, or vice versa. So whatever you provide us, this is what we grant the variance on. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Understand that.
All right, and of course, border health certificate of compliance of the septic you installed. Yes, Commissioner?
The architectural, it needs to be stamped also.
They do?
I would like them stamped.
Okay, stamped architecture plans.
Okay.
I would say. I would say personally, no, but the commissioner can always turn this application down if they're not stamped. Then you have to come back and appeal his decision. So I would make your life easier and get them stamped.
Yes.
Okay?
So we're gonna need some time before, we can't bring him back on September 25th.
How much time you need to prepare all this, Counselor? October 9 or October 23?
Oh, why don't we make October 9?
I'm gonna say at least the 23rd because...
You think the 23rd? Okay, I'll say it for your benefit.
All right. Before we go forward, the...
Deal with your architectural plan.
Forward with the extension. And is there anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this matter? Wanna step forward? State your name and address for the record.
Denise McDowell, 6 Mattows Ave, Wareham.
You're in Abara?
Mid-Castle Street.
Okay, and you are in favor of this matter?
I am in favor.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Anyone here against this matter? I hear none. That being said, board member, any questions before we make a motion?
No.
All right, can we get a motion to continue?
Motion to continue until 10:23, 24.
Okay, motion by Jim to continue. 42-24 Ellis Francis Jr., 7 Mattows Ave till October, seven matters have till October 23rd. Do I have a second on Jim's?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor to continue, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee Aye. We'll see you on the 23rd with the list we asked you for.
Three items, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. You know, hurry to get out of here, I'm just... Nazee, we cleared the room.
Nice.
There was a crowd when we came in. Lions, tigers, and bears.
Always do, don't we? All right. Any discussion, guys, before we take off? Troy, any question, discussions?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Before we go further, if I might say, I see, I see what Mr. Akabachi mentioned about the planning board. I mean, he calls it discrimination, whatever he calls it, that's fine. It would be nice to get comments on every project from the planning board. It's always good to have other inputs, not single and out a project once every seven years. So if they come with every site plan, I mean, like Jimmy said, for the last eight years, we, we heard two. One on Cranberry Highway and this one on Cranberry Highway. On 4EB, what's it, not Satlevsburg, the big one, Woodlands Cove. Woodlands Cove, planning board did not comment, but a planning board member back then, the architect, came on his own and proposed to change the layout and we did. It was a great idea. If you guys remember, the parking lot was the inside and he said, let's make a quarter inside and make the parking lot outside and it was great. So any input from planning board would be great, or other boards, anybody. But not once in a while. You gotta be consistent. It'd be nice to be consistent. So nobody feel they've been singled out or acting against them or whatever.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I can add, I do email in the beginning of every site plan review. I apologize, Mr. Sniger, for not, I, as you know, I was sending it to the wrong onset fire department email address, but I do send it to all the entities, including the planning board, so...
For every application?
Every site, well, every site plan review application.
It goes to the planning board?
Yes, it does.
And we never hear from them? Okay, thank you for the clarification.
We do both Wareham and onset water department.
That's correct, yes.
We had that, we had that problem on.
Captain Sniger, thanks for coming in tonight. Appreciate it, thank you. Do you wanna add anything tonight or you're good?
No, I do...
If you wanna say something, you're gonna come to the mic, please.
It's nothing with anything that came up tonight, but I did see...
Would just state your name and for the record?
Lieutenant Sniger, Ronson Fire Department.
Sorry for saying Captain Lieutenant.
It's okay, not a problem. I don't mind the promotion.
I don't pay though.
I did happen to, I was looking through a bunch of your projects coming up. One of them is a car dealership that's gonna be at 3090 Cranberry Highway.
Yes.
21 spots. I need clarification on which building is 3090 Cranberry Highway? Because Plumber Supply is also...
Is the one used to be a church?
Yes, but Plumber Supply and that building?
No, just the church.
Yeah, yeah, but which ones?
The building that had, that had the...
Hobby shop.
The comic book place is 3090, but also Plumber Supply is known as 3090?
Is it? Well, it's not Plumber Supply.
I believe we have two 3090s on Cranberry Highway.
Probably, yeah, but it is the building that was comics or church or golf.
I know the building you're talking about.
Right, and, and that lot was not compliant. We made them make it compliant lot with the wits and stuff. And you didn't comment on that project?
I did not comment.
I thought we saw it swept.
I did not comment on that project. I just noticed it today, or I noticed it a while ago and I just kinda was looking through it today. Today, my, when I saw it today, my concern was the address. We gotta iron out an address because there's multiple 3090 Cranberry Highways.
Okay. I'm sure once it comes for, before the commissioner, he'll address, he'll see it.
It's more of a planning, is that more of a planning? So numbering.
Select assessors.
Assessors, okay.
I ran into a similar problem some years back with an address and the post office thought they were the number granting authority. And they granted a number to an address and refused to change it. And the town thought they were the number granting authority and there was a third party, I forget who it was, so...
I run into that at my own place where I live. It happens a lot.
Well, I tell you what. When the, when the place get built, if it ever get built, you don't sign on occupancy until you secure the address, until you have proof from everybody the address is right.
I know as I go down the buildings there, like Skaggs Transmission, the Abader is 3092. That would be 3090. Plumber Supply is 3090. 38 Cranberry Highway is the Haber Opco. 386 Cranberry Highway is where that RC or the Rent-A-Center place, building is now. So it's just, you don't even have the room to fit it in there. I don't know how that's gonna be solved.
Like I said...
You mean they don't have a number available?